...and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 5, 2020. Please join me in the pledge allegiance of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the resolution for which it stands. One man under God indivisible.
While everyone's standing, I'm gonna make it a habit of doing this while we're in this. A moment of silence, please, for all those who have passed away from COVID-19, which number keeps growing and growing and growing unfortunately. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Conba?
He's excused.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Mansouri?
Here.
Mr. Sedata?
Here.
Vice Chair Skibor?
Here.
And Chairwoman Federick?
Here. Thank you, Jim.
Jim.
And we also have Mrs. Shaw?
Present.
And now that she's here, and we know that she's here, she has a slight announcement for us.
I'm present as well.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, who?
Bobbi, I'm present as well. My name was not called, but I'm here.
Oh, yes, Mr. Vaddy? Yeah.
Sorry, thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, so just so everybody's aware, Care 1 has filed its appeal. So I will be responding to it. I just wanted to inform everyone, if you'd like a copy of what was filed, I will upload it and send it to you tomorrow. That's for the board members, okay?
And may I ask, is Mr. Patel here?
Yes, he is. I can see him. You can't?
Okay. I can't see? I don't have a screen.
Yeah, I know, you don't. Okay. Can you read the first case, please, Jim?
Yes. Case number Z072020, Gregory Jaffe, East Dean Price Drive, Edison, New Jersey, 08817. Session 37.63-1, numbers 10 and 16, all can use D variances sought to construct an addition and an add level on the existing single-family homes. Two-story addition to consist of three bedrooms. Clean coverage permitted is 23%. Proposed is 31.84%. Maximum FAR is 44%. Proposed is 54.34%. Effective properties located in the R.B. zone designated as Block 82.M lot number 16 on the Edison tax and tax map will take work as an order.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder, please keep yourselves on mute until you have something to say. Good evening, Mr. Smith, the second Mr. Jaffe.
Hi, good evening. This is Stephen Smith from the law firm of Herrick Feinstein on behalf of Mr. Jaffe.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Swear, ma'am?
Is that his first witness, or is he going to give a preliminary?
I don't know, Mr. Smith. Are you gonna give a preliminary statement? Do you want us to swear Mr. Jaffe in?
No.
What would you like?
You can go ahead and swear Mr. Jaffe in. He's gonna take the lead.
Okay, great.
Okay, Mr. Jaffe, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have one recuse, and Mr. Schmuel has to recuse himself. So he will be leaving the meeting now, since this is the only case on for tonight. Okay, Mr. Schmuel?
Firstly, I just want to say that Mr. Jaffe is a wonderful neighbor. And sorry that I can't be at the meeting.
Okay, we will see you next month.
Take care, guys.
Take care. Stay safe, stay healthy. Mr. Jaffe, the floor is yours. What do you want to do and why?
Thank you very much for taking the opportunity to let me present. We're looking to add bedrooms to our house as well as an office. We have, thank God, I've been blessed with a large family, six children. My oldest one will be turning 21 in September, and I have a daughter who's 19, a daughter who's 16. I have a 12-year-old son who has special needs. He's been diagnosed with severe ADHD. And while we are medicating him, there's certain things that the therapists have suggested for us that he needs. There's limiting factors, the fact that he's sharing a bedroom now. Quite simply, sometimes he just needs a quiet place to himself, where he can work on a puzzle or do activities. So that's a major factor as to why we're looking to do, in addition, is to add bedrooms so my son with special needs could have his own space. In addition to those four children, also, thank God, we have an eight-year-old and a three-year-old. And as our family is growing, becoming older, they need an individual space for their own personal growth. That's the main reason. But secondly, I would add, I also have the privilege of serving as a community rabbi here in Edison for the last 12 years. And I don't have an office in my home. So when congregants want to come to me, and understandably, over the last few months, there's been a tremendous amount of pastoral counseling due to health issues and nervousness, and just people want to have a place to talk. So I've been using my family room as a makeshift rabbi's office. So it's not really so conducive. My congregants would like privacy, my children would like to have privacy. So including the plans, those are one of the additional to make an office study so I'd be able to help in terms of, you know, in times of emergencies, I can have counseling for the congregants of my synagogue. Now, I just also add that we've been very successful in avoiding all the setbacks, is having to eliminate any of the undue variance issues. Our architect, who is here on the call, also worked very closely to make sure, put a tremendous amount of effort into making that as possible. And if there's any technical questions, we'd obviously comply with any items that are related to getting an engineering approval. And again, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to this.
Mr. Smith, do you plan to have a planner, since this is a use? Mr. Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine. I defer to Mr. Jaffe and his architect. Yes.
Mr. Smith, with respect to the planning testimony that is probably necessary, because this is an FAR, it's a significant FAR increase, and that you're asking for with respect to a variance, you're gonna need certain proofs. I'm not sure your architect is qualified as a planner to be able to provide those proofs. I think you're gonna need additional testimonies. Is there someone who's qualified that can give the planning testimony that would be required?
No, not on this application.
Okay, well, so here's what I'm gonna say to you. I mean, you obviously have the right to continue and proceed with this application at this time. But if the board chooses to find that the planning testimony is lacking, or they don't have sufficient proofs necessary to grant an FAR variance in this application, and if you are denied, then you will not be able to come back with the same application. So you might seriously wanna consider maybe carrying the matter further? Maybe putting on your architect, and then we'll have another date, and maybe, you know, having some planning testimony? I mean, it's your case, so I defer to you as to what you'd like to do. But I just don't want the board to think that they don't have sufficient proof here to grant it, and then that leaves your client in an awkward position.
And just to add to that, as the usual procedure, when someone does come in, even without an attorney, one of the things that we always suggest is that they have an attorney and a planner, because it's just beneficial to them, and it protects the applicant. So in accordance with what Ms. Shaw said, we can hear the architect tonight. We've heard from Mr. Jaffe. We can carry it until you can hire a planner, and then come back with a planner, and then hear the rest of the case at that point. But again, it's up to you as the attorney for the applicant, you just tell us what you would like to do.
Yeah, I think it's important that the architect at least be heard this evening.
Yes, that's not a problem.
Okay.
And then you'll come back with a planner? Is that what you're planning to do? Come back with a planner? We'll carry you, and you'll come back with a planner?
Yes, I think that makes sense, subject to either Mr. Jaffe or the architect disagreeing with me. But I think that makes sense, yes.
Mr. Jaffe, do you have any problems with that?
No, could I just ask, my architect would allow to present on behalf of the case?
Yes, yes, he can present tonight, so this way he can be asked any questions, and this way he doesn't have to come back again. And the next time around, you just have your planner, who can do the planning testimony that's beneficial and really required in the FAR use, okay?
Okay, with that being said, I'm presuming, and I don't wanna presume, but I'm assuming your architect's going to testify next, Mr. Smith?
Yeah. How are you? Yes.
Okay, so sir, if you would raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, yes, what Mr. Jaffe had already presented is absolutely the truth in terms of the use and what we're going for. As you can see, also, there is, what increased some of our numbers in this presentation was to rebuild, obviously, their kitchen area. If you look on the plans that were submitted, you'll notice that there's an additional rear extension of the kitchen, because currently, although they do have what is considered a religiously appropriate kitchen, it is very small for a family of that size. So part of this addition is not only the rear extension, but also trying to provide a family room space that was quite critical to this family.
Okay, go ahead.
Down on the lower level on the first floor was considered a family room next to the foyer. We were taking that out to allow that to be an entryway, as well as a collective space for the family to come into the home, as well as, as Mr. Jaffe had said, we're dealing with his congregants to be able to invite them into the home, hopefully, and then using the office. Yes, the FAR is high on this particular piece of property. But what we did was, in order to try and remediate some of that impact, we had stayed below the impervious lot coverage. That's our single largest, you know, concern in that area, as with Edison has passed multiple ordinances related to runoff and dry well and seepage pits. So in this particular design, we managed to hold back all setbacks, and also keep the impervious lot coverage, which is the direct response of, you know, the direct impact of larger structures to reduce rain and runoff on this particular application. So this is one of the reasons why this design is what it is. Although it does produce a lot of living space, the living space, the FAR doesn't impact any of the other ordinance regulations. So that's one of the reasons why we had tried to do this in this manner.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions of Mr. Jaffe or of the architect? Mr. Jaffe will be back, if you think of anything else. But I'm assuming at this point, the architect will not. So this way, Mr. Jaffe doesn't have the expense unless the architect feels he has to come back, and Mr. Jaffe feels he has to come back.
Madam Chair, question? Sir?
For the architect?
This is for the architect.
Yes.
Mr. Trupowski?
Trupowski, it's okay.
Okay. You mentioned impervious. One of the requirements for minor stormwater management comes into play if you exceed 500 square feet.
Yes.
You have a footprint that is over 800 square feet added.
Yes.
So I think your planner would probably need to...
You broke up, I lost you there.
Over the 500 square feet, and it requires...
Bill? Bill? Start back. Come closer to the screen, because we're losing your voice.
I'm sorry.
And start over a little bit, because we lost you in between.
I apologize.
That's okay, not a problem.
The minor stormwater management goes into effect when the impervious coverage exceeds 500 square feet.
Yes.
The footprint of the addition to this building exceeds 800 square feet.
Yes.
Therefore, it puts that in that stormwater management.
Absolutely, automatically. We understand that.
So who is going to address that?
Well, that would be met with a seepage pit, which we had put on the drawings as part of the understanding that we are above that 500 square foot requirement that Edison put in place some years ago. But in regards to the impervious, impervious surfaces cause the maximum amount of runoff. So when you exceed impervious, you actually create a much more undue runoff than what the property can handle. That's typically how that measure of percentage comes about in terms of a zoning ordinance. So by staying under the impervious, we've tried to then mitigate that problem. Yes, we do have to put in a dry well, as per your ordinance. That's a secondary element related to this application.
If that should... I see it, okay. I apologize, I see it now on the...
Yeah, the zoning schedule.
On grading plan.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So we had denoted on the zoning schedule comparison chart, the two issues, the two items of variation that was required, which was the building lot coverage. Yes, we have exceeded, as most of the houses on that block in that actual neighborhood do now, those who have renovated and added additional, because the 23% is actually very small compared to a lot of the houses that have been developed there now, especially the two latest ones around the corner. And with that floor area ratio, most of our increased gross floor area is actually found on the new second floor on the addition because of the full second floor over the house, where the existing house was a split level. So you lose close to 50% of the house on the original split level. So that's pretty much how we work the numbers, trying to be as respectful of the ordinance as we possibly could.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Jaffe or the architect? None?
Rose?
Okay.
Rose?
Yes, who's calling me? Yes, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Peter.
I got that question about the side yard setback?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a... I do see that you are obviously coming out. Is there an issue with the side yard setback?
No, if you look on the grading plan, and I believe that is Sheet A2 as submitted with the application, you'll see that all of our... There was a previous variance granted for a rear yard setback for a small dining room addition many years back. I believe it was a decade ago, Mr. Jaffe can contest to that. But we have no issue related to side yards. We have a six-foot requirement for a minimum on one side, which we've met. And then we have a total of 18, so 12 on the other side. So we have met all required setbacks on the addition.
Okay, Peter, Mr. Ayat wants to add something or say something.
This entire addition is within the building envelope. It meets all standards for setbacks. The only issue is the use variance and the building coverage.
Yes.
But other than that, it meets the side yard, front yard, and rear yard setback.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it was just mentioned that there were the variance permitted for a, I guess, a previous construction on the extension into the back?
Yes.
And that, again, now we have no issues moving forward? That previous variance doesn't need to be, I guess, revisited, or...
No, we're doing no work in that area. We're not adding to that area. It's literally existing, in this particular instance, existing non-conforming.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, anyone else have any questions of Mr. Jaffe or the architect?
How long ago was that previous... How long ago? The variance, I'm sorry.
I believe, best memory I can use, 2006.
Okay.
Were there any restrictions on it that would move forward? Any new building on the...
No.
Mr. Smith, do you by any chance have a copy of that, the resolution from 2006?
I do not, no.
Okay.
Does your client have a copy that maybe could be provided to the board before they hear additional testimony at the next meeting?
Mr. Jaffe, do you have a copy of that 200 resolution in your files?
I believe I do. I'm not positive, but I believe I do. I could check with my previous records to see. I didn't prepare that for tonight's meeting.
Okay, that's okay. Why don't you check, and then get in touch with Mr. Ayat and let him know? And if so, get it to your attorney, and he can submit it, and then the board can get it. And if you don't, Mr. Ayat, there's a way Lillian can find it.
We can all, yeah.
Yeah, we can find it, if you can. I mean, don't go crazy. If you look, and you can find it, fine. But just call Mr. Ayat and let him know. So this way, we know whether we have to go into the archives to get it, or whether you have it, okay?
What number could I reach Mr. Ayat at?
Number 2. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, last call. Any questions for Mr. Jaffe or the architect? Okay.
I'm sorry, Rose. Sorry. The... I'm just looking at the garage. Is that the original state that the garage was in? Or was that, I see a storage section. Was that always existing?
As far from what I have, what I know from speaking to Mr. Jaffe, when he purchased the home that was already split into another room, the family before him may have used it as a makeshift bedroom. It has no... It's really strange, because it has no heat. So, but it's right now, it's just used for storage.
So there's no way to get into the garage from the house? You have to, again?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Jacob, real quick, can you, just based off the drawing that we have, the additions are gonna be the wrap. Based off the titles, the first floor is the rabbi's office, the playroom, the family room. And then on the upstairs, the entire, I'm assuming, left side bedroom, bedroom, master bathroom, and master bedroom.
Yes, yes. The only thing happening on the existing second floor of the house is there, we're removing one bedroom from the second floor of the home, and turning that into a laundry room, because the family obviously produces a lot of laundry with six children. So that's the change to the second floor, and to provide the hallway connecting over to the new extension on the second floor. And then on the first floor, the existing first floor of the house, the only thing that's happening is, like I said earlier, the kitchen pushing to the rear, and taking that existing family room on the front lower level by the foyer, and just removing the walls to make it open space by the front door.
Thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Shaw, you've been working with Lillian. When could we carry this to? What does August look like?
August does not look like it's going to be a good month to carry this. We're gonna have planning testimony. I'm guessing it's gonna be September or October, because September also has a heavy application.
September does.
September does?
Yes.
Have the application. So that means we're gonna have to go to...
Potentially to October.
October, okay.
But I think, you have the calendars that Lillian... No, right?
No.
So...
Because we have to do a date now.
And we have...
You know what you could do? You could carry it to the October date, and then if it has to be... That way you don't have to renotice, but then...
I have October 20th.
Carry it to the October 20th date, and then if it has to be... If that date does not work out for some odd reason, because we don't have our calendar person who can take care of this.
She had a medical emergency in her family.
Yeah, so...
At the latest date?
Yeah.
That would be the latest date, I think.
Well, we need to announce the date right now, so they don't have to renotice. That's the thing. That's why I have to give a proper date.
Okay, then we're gonna go with the 20th, then?
Okay.
October 20th, yeah.
But we did have another cancellation today.
On which date?
No, it was... That was for a setback. And they shrunk it down, so I don't know what date that was set for. Lillian told me about it, but I don't know. So we have to know it by...
Yeah, to play safe, and also, truthfully, in this day and age, with everybody doing limited hours and at-home hours, it also gives Mr. Smith time to find a planner who can prepare too.
Here's an option. You could schedule it for the September date, with the understanding that this is what the public will know, so you won't have to renotice. If it becomes a problem, and Lillian tells us that it's an issue, she's gonna reach out to you, and we'll announce it on that date.
I don't think September will be an issue. It'll be canceled today.
You know which one? Because there was a heavy application.
You just told me. Verbal.
Mr. Smith, do you have a problem with that? If we do the September date now, and then with the understanding that once we check the calendar, if there's a problem, then we'll carry you till October, and we'll just announce it at the meeting? So this way, you don't have to keep renoticing and spending money for renotice?
Yes. No, that sounds fine. What day in September, though?
Should we go for the first or the second of the meeting? 22nd or 21st? Okay, so this is the notice. This matter is going to be carried to September, which will be the September 22nd meeting. And no further notice will be required. So it will be heard with the planner for September 22nd.
That's fine, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
I do need to add one thing. As Ms. Federick just said, you won't have to renotice. You know, your architect testified, Mr. Jaffe testified. The only thing I would say is, we have not gone out to the public.
Public, right.
So if the public at the next meeting has any questions, and you don't have your architect, that could delay you, so I just wanted you to be aware of it. That's really the call. Do we even have any public today?
Is there any public there now? Is there any public out there?
One person, nobody's...
Okay, so then, just so you're aware, in case there are questions for the architect, and he's not here, then that could create a problem at that stage, but hopefully...
Understood, understood, thank you.
Okay. Okay, good night, good night. Thank you so much. Please stay safe and stay healthy. And what... Wait a minute?
They can go, they're done.
Okay, so, yes, good night, Mr. Jaffe, good night, Mr. Architect, and good night, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, have a good night.
Take care.
Healthy, and we'll see you in September.
Do you have an updated agenda that Lillian has to have with the three resolutions that would be adopted?
I do, yes, I do.
Okay, so can I...
Resolution.
Gonna need a copy of that as well, if you wanna do the resolution.
Yeah.
Want me to read them?
Yes, please.
Resolutions to be adopted. D032020, Ali Rashid, approved June 30th, 2020. D532018, Jonathan Rosenberg, approved June 30th, 2020. D292019, Ashesh Patel, approved June 23rd, 2020.
Okay. I think maybe because we're doing it this way, we'll go as a roll call. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I have a second. I'm sorry, someone second it?
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Mansouri. And now just call the roll call, so we can... Yeah, which is just a little bit different.
Need a motion?
Peter.
Okay, and we'll go for roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
No, he was... He recused himself, so he left.
Mr. Mansouri?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sedata?
Yes, on the motion.
Vice Chair Skibor?
Yes, on the motion.
Chairwoman Federick?
Nope, you have two more. I have to be the last. You have Mr. Patel and Mr. Vaddy.
Okay, Mr. Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes, on the motion.
And now me.
Thank you.
Yes, on the motion. Yes, on the motion.
Okay.
Okay, guys, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second? Second?
Second.
All the same?
All right.
Okay, stay safe, stay healthy, and I guess we'll see you in August.
You too.
Good.
Same.
Night.
Night.